An ongoing pandemic of unprecedented proportions. Covid nineteen has impacted lives and livelihoods across the globe. While the current crisis has severely affected many a sectors, it has also been an eye opener to several opportunities that have presented themselves during this time. To this effect, Honorable Prime Minister Sri Narayana Modi made a clarion call for an Atmanirbhara Bharat or a self-reliant India that would be a source of local integrity, creating global impact. Being the agricultural economy that India is, agriculture, food and nutrition can be identified as the pillars on which Atmanirbhara Bharat would stand and on which the new India could pole vault into an era of sustainable economic prosperity and societal good. With this, I would like to introduce to you our panel of experts to deliberate on the importance of agriculture, food, nutrition nexus as enablers for Atmanirbhara Bharat. But before we move ahead, let me remind you that there is a session on mitigating challenges to India's education in 2020s, CSR prioritization for now and future that will be starting in track A in a short while. I would like to invite our moderator, Mr. Sharm Bembur, Senior Advisor and Practice Lead at Agriculture at Willgrove. Sharm is an independent strategy and market management consultant focused on FMCG and agribusiness sectors. Allied with his consulting practice, he also is an executive coach specializing at the C level and function or business head levels. Prior to starting his independent consulting practice, he was a globally experienced business leader with diverse commercial operations and strategic management roles across industries, geographies and countries. He has held global leadership roles in business, commercial operations, strategy and marketing cutting across the consumables and agri sectors in companies such as Unilever, Monsanto and the Mahindra Group. He is an alumnus of executive leadership development programs at Harvard, Yale, Cornell and IMD and is a member of Mensa, the international high IQ society. I would further like to invite our panelists, Dr. Purvi Mehta, Head of Asia for Agriculture at Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Dr. Mehta has worked with CGIAR as Head of Asia for the International Livestock Research Institute and also as Head of South Asia Biosafety Program and brings a blend of Asia and Africa experience. She is on board of several organizations including International Alliance for Ecology and Health Canada, International Centre for Rural Agriculture Netherlands, Independent Director on the Board of National Commodity Derivatives Exchange Limited, NCDX, Global Advisory Council for World Food Price etc. She is honorary professor at MIT University India and visiting scientist at Cornell University. She has been closely associated with several agriculture and nutrition policies, policy platforms in India, Southeast Asia and Africa and serves on several committees and advisory panels. She was the recipient of Agriculture Today Award 2014 for her contributions to agriculture policies in South Asia. We welcome you ma'am.
Thank you.
Our second panelist, Mr. Ashwini Saxena is the CEO of JSW Foundation and also serves as a Director of JSW Shakti, a section eight company focusing on women livelihoods. Prior to JSW, he led CSR programs of SR Group in Africa and India. During his tenure at Africa, he contributed as an executive committee member of Zimbabwe India Chamber of Commerce and advisor to Regional Centre for Social Responsibility and other institutions. Mr. Saxena served IFC World Bank where he led some strategic CSR advisory programs besides working on the introductions of IFC's CSR sustainability tools and WBI programs in South Asia. During his stint with UNIDO, he was behind India's first few geographical indication registries for artisan products and he also served as a key expert for UNC TAD for awareness on these issues. Our third panel member is Dr. Bhavana Sharma, Head of Nutrition Science at ITC Foods. Dr. Bhavana is responsible for developing and executing the nutritional product and policies pipeline, public health-based CSR and sustainability initiatives and R&amp;D product strategies across all categories under the ITC FBD division. She is a member of many national and international nutrition and regulatory groups and works very closely with both the external scientific and regulatory groups. Before this, she was working in GSK as a senior scientist, Innovation Lead India for Family Nutrition Portfolio. She was responsible for researching on newer science avenues to support the company's vision on leading innovations through science in areas of growth in children, bone health, cognition and energy metabolism. She has been working in the field of nutrition and public health since the last fifteen years in various roles primarily in driving innovation strategies, clinical research, product development, nutrition education, developing dietary intake research methodologies in capacity of a subject matter expert. Our fourth panel member is Mr. Amit Umar Singh, Country Representative, India, Tanager. Amit is an agribusiness and market development expert with more than sixteen years of experience conceptualizing and executing agriculture and livelihood development programs in a wide range of value chains in agriculture, horticulture and forestry. As Tanager's country representative for India, he provides the team leadership and direction for Tanager's portfolio for supply chain strengthening activities with a focus on women and landless farmers. Amit has dedicated his career to strengthening communities and has been responsible for projects that organized more than a hundred thousand smallholder farmers into self-help and producer groups. He also brings expertise in conducting large-scale research studies including baseline and end-term assessments for USA, DFID and Ford Foundation, among others. And is passionate about developing new tools using participatory rapid appraisals. Last but not the least, we have with us Dr. Satendra Arya, CEO Agriculture Skill Council of India. Dr. Satendra is responsible for providing a strategic vision to ASCI in ensuring that the team moves cohesively towards the achievement of India's Skill India mission. He's a senior management professional of proven capability with thirty years of corporate and development sector experience in skill development category management, food and agricultural supply chain, international business, new business development and vendor management functional areas. He has handled multifarious responsibilities with leading MNCs and Indian corporates such as Sinushem, Gracim Industries, Reliance Retail and NDDB. Dr. Satendra holds degrees in international and rural management and is an alumnus of prestigious IIFT and IRMA. It is truly an honor to have all of you here with us today. Over to the moderator now. Over to you, Mr. Sharm. See, you're not audible.
Hello, am I audible now?
Yes, Sharm, you are.
Yes, loud and clear. Thank you.
Hello.
Yes, sir, you're audible. Are we audible?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry about this. I think I tested it before we started. My apologies. But thanks a lot for that wonderful set of introductions who joined. I think it brings home the fact that we've got an absolutely wonderful set of panelists here to take us through the next hour of discussions and I'm really glad we are part of such an August panel with people with years of experience and several PhDs in the mix. So, welcome to all of you. So, I think I'll just take a brief, maybe thirty seconds sort of outlining what the thesis is. I know we discussed it on a call we had last week and I've spoken to the rest of you individually as well over the last couple of days. But basically, how does Atmanirbhara Bharat as a mission translate to sector-specific goals? And today we are talking about a specific sector which is the agriculture, food, nutrition complex. And what do various players in the agriculture, food, nutrition complex, be they CSR organizations, be they businesses, be they startups, be they corporates, how do they, are they and can they impact their respective spheres of activity to build up multiple theses which can then go up to becoming an Atmanirbhara Bharat platform so to speak in the larger economy? So, you know, how do businesses do it? How do startups do it? You know, how do, you know, foundations like the Gates Foundation look at it? What is the impact of scaling on this? So, I think the panel that's been put together has got organizations and people from the organizations who can look at this topic of building an Atmanirbhara India platform in this agriculture, food, nutrition complex from various perspectives and the objective of this session is that at the end of it, we can weave together these threads to make a coherent picture of how the various players present on this panel can contribute towards Atmanirbhara Bharat. You know, it's easy to say Atmanirbhara Bharat, very difficult in fact to activate it. And I know from personal experiences, a lot of work being done on the ground on various aspects of this. So, what I will do now is, you know, I'll try to sort of go through it in a manner such that, you know, we alternate panelists from the social sector, from business, from foundations and so on. So, we can sort of keep toggling back and forth between one theme and the other. So, to begin with, I'd like to invite Purvi from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to sort of kickstart it. And when I was speaking to her, I was struck by some of the language that she used to outline the work that she... Sorry. The language that she used and the thoughts that came top of her mind when we talked about the session and she said, "How agricultural economics and the challenges of nutrition, how they link with each other?" Very interesting thought. It hadn't occurred to me before and it really stood out to me as almost kind of a lateral thinking exercise in this area. And the second thing she said was market competitiveness of farmers and their profitability is an important area where the Gates Foundation focuses on. And how does market competitiveness of farmers, how does their profitability and how do agricultural economics and the challenges of nutrition, how do these three or four areas link up to creating a self-reliant India? And what does the Gates Foundation and Purvi personally think about these aspects as it relates to the topic of the day? So, Purvi, over to you, six to seven minutes.
Thank you, Sharm. While you were speaking, I was trying to remember what I told you. So, thank you. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be a part of this panel. I see some very, very prominent names in the panel and a pleasure being here. I think also congratulations to the organizers. CSR over the years have become a very interesting mechanism for sort of amplified impact. And I think they can play an extremely crucial role in the public-private partnership, more like a matchmaking role between the two and the large public policies and its impact on the ground. So, congratulations and thanks for this forum. To respond to your remark on agriculture, nutrition linkage, Sharm, I think we are talking about a linkage between source of food and consumption of food. And within the context of India, that linkage is, it's a paradox. It's an extremely strong linkage, but at the same time, there are large number of weaknesses in that linkage as well. Strong because of the very, very high dependence, one of the highest in the world, dependence on locally grown, locally sourced food. Close to forty-seven percent of India's population eat what they grow or what their neighbors grow. And therefore, there is a very, very high dependence on what people produce and what their nutrition levels are, right? Or the lack of it. So, there is a very, very strong correlation and link there. But at the same time, there is also a big gap there because, you know, if this was true, what I just said, why would we be one of the largest producer of food in the world and yet also host some of the world's largest number of malnutrient population? So, this is this binary or paradox there. Where are the opportunities? I think the opportunities lie in couple of things. Number one is today, for example, fifty-eight percent of India's predominantly diet across various health or wealth quantile comes predominantly from two crops, rice and wheat. We see huge variations in terms of people's incomes and things like that and how their nutrition levels are, right? So, diversification offers a very good opportunity, not just from a farming perspective because, you know, adding non-serious to the farming practices, horticulture, livestock, all of that. But at the same time, to pick up from what you just mentioned, the economics of it. We have evidences after evidences in this country from almost every single state that diversified commodity production also contributes higher to farmers' income. So, often, you know, twenty years ago, when we used to have these debates, we used to think of nutrition and farmers' income or food production as a trade-off, which is not true. Diversification is offering more income, so a good economic sense to the farmer, but at the same time, nutrition also. I often say that just by telling the farmer, you know, what is good to eat doesn't work that way unless you are making that food accessible and affordable. There are huge, huge differences and I know Bhavana and others will pick this up and, you know, huge differences in terms of the cost of food at the grassroots level, right? The cost of rice and wheat versus the cost of, say, animal-sourced food or fruits and vegetables and all that. So, unless we focus on affordability, access and availability of food, which of course agriculture is a very important pathway too, we will not be able to address this issue. I just wanted to quickly bring four points and as being the first panelist, I think I'm going to just flag these issues and other experts in the panel can pick this up. Number one is the whole value chain approach that we've been talking about. There are several people on this panel who work on that. I wanted to mention two major gaps and also as a CSR opportunity. Number one is within value chains, there are huge commodity differences. There are certain commodities in this country, about twelve of commodities whose value chains are pretty well established, whereas many other commodities where the value chain approach has not been taken. So, there are huge opportunities in those commodities for a value chain development. And within the context of value chain also, pre-harvest value chains are often much more stronger than post-harvest value chain. We've been very, very production-oriented people. We have really not been very market-oriented people. As I said, people, it's all of us, right? People working in science, people working in policy and everything. So, marketability in post-harvest is a huge opportunity within the value chain as well. That leads me to my second point, which is farmers' holding capacity. At the moment in this country, we know all the data on the post-harvest losses and all of that, right? At the moment in this country, essentially, the holding capacity or the farmer's ability to store, right? So, holding capacity of a farmer is only close to six to eight percent, which means over and above six to eight percent, all the producers in the country is actually not being able to store. They are not able to hold on, which has huge economic impact, but at the same time, huge nutrition loss impact. So, large opportunities there. The third point you mentioned is the market competitiveness. I'd like to flag an issue that let's stop working for the farmers as beneficiary. I think it is very, very important that farmers are made partners into this one. And that's where the market competitiveness will come and that's where the inclusivity of the farmer will come. Because unless, see, being very honest, unless they see a business proposition to the nutritious farming, nutrition is never going to be on top of the agenda. So, we will have to create incentive for a farmer so that they are able to shift to all these great things we are talking about in terms of diversification and all that. So, creating an incentive-based market competitiveness by farmers' participation. And the last point is about aggregation. We know the mechanisms like Farmer-Producer Organization, I know Amit is on the panel and will speak about it and also Farmer-Producer Organization, but let me at the end also say that, you know, we are the type of people who keep promoting aggregation and know the power of aggregation for farmers and when they come together and so forth, there is a great need for people like us to aggregate as well. And, you know, after all, I think these are extremely complex issue. Nutrition is a complex issue. If it wasn't, we would have solved it by now. And also an unfelt need by and large as far as policies and so forth is concerned. And therefore, you know, aggregation among the various stakeholders working across the different portions of value chain is going to be extremely crucial. Over, Sharm.
Thanks a lot, Purvi. That was succinctly put and very well articulated and gave us so much food for thought. I think if I could just take a quick thirty seconds to summarize. You said there's actually opportunities in nutrition. Diversification of nutrition is actually an opportunity for farmer profitability to increase and that's not a link that seems so often, you know, even in policymakers and that's... And the third, second point that you made is that, you know, it's interesting. We don't really think about it that way, but we have our solutions in agriculture. In fact, necessarily have been production-oriented because we were a country of shortages, PL480 shipped to mouth and all those days. So, it was necessary. But I think today we are sitting on a glut of a lot of things and we need to move from a production orientation to an evacuation orientation in terms of output value chains. And it's because of a production orientation that the input value chains are so strong. Our yields have improved, but output value chains are so weak and there's a reason for that. I think there's a mindset change that is needed, the link between... And it's a very interesting point you make that if you diversify nutrition sources for India, it will lead to increased farmer profitability, which is true, right? But it's not a link that is immediately apparent to people who are not in the field. So, thanks so much and I think, you know, some of the other participants might pick up on these threads in their remarks. But I'd just like to take a pause here and do something I should have probably done at the beginning of my introduction, which is say that the structure of this, and I mentioned this to you individually, but I thought I'd mention it, the structure of this is that I invite each participant in turn to come in. I'll ask a question which is specifically oriented towards the area that participant works in, the panelist works in. And each of us speaks for about six to seven minutes and then in the end we throw it open for Q&amp;A. It might come in or a submission in case I have the time to do that. So, I just thought I'd mention that. Now, going from Purvi, I, you know, one of the things that strikes me and, you know, even before and when I spoke to all of you is that, you know... So, just going back to previous session and she said, you know, nutrition is so important and the thought that went through my mind was that, as Napoleon Bonaparte said, "An army does not march on an empty stomach." And, you know, and if we are hungry, if we are malnourished as a population, if farmers are malnourished, how much can they do? So, I think that's a point that's often missed. And then coming on to the second panelist, I'll request Dr. Satendra Arya of the Agriculture Skill Council of India to come in. And the thought that I have here is that, you know, unless our farmers and people who work in the agriculture, nutrition, food complex are skilled enough to take advantages of the opportunities being opened up currently with all the new laws that have been passed, can they really help in building an Atmanirbhara Bharat? If they themselves are not self-reliant and they themselves don't have the skills to be able to do what they need to do. And at least my thesis is that unless individually people are skilled, they probably won't be able to participate and this self-reliant movement in agriculture may not really work out. So, with that thought, Dr. Arya, I throw it open to you for your intervention of maybe of six to seven minutes. In terms of a lot of the work that your organization is doing, you know, you're doing parascaling of people. You have, for instance, Sagaramitra Yojana, Matsi Yojana, Sagaramitayojana. You've got, the whole setup is oriented towards scaling of people. So, what's the work that you do and what role does scaling play in helping to build up people to achieve self-reliance?
Thanks, Sharm. See, agriculture is not perceived as a vocation in the first place in the mind space of, you know, millions of the, you know, urban people. And that's a challenge. I mean, a son of a farmer doesn't get a bride just because, you know, he's a farmer. Because the inclination is to get a job even if he is getting seven thousand or eight thousand in an urban, you know, setup rather than earning eleven thousand to fourteen thousand just by keeping one murabah fellow. So, there is something, you know, which is lacking here and considering the fact that almost fifty percent of the workforce in India is constituted by agriculture workforce. But when we go slightly deeper into this, less than zero point six percent of the male agriculture workers and less than zero point two percent of the female agriculture workers have got any kind of formal or, you know, formal technical education. And given the fact that the traditional knowledge transfer is on the win. I mean, gone are the days when, you know, youth used to spend a considerable period of time with their, you know, elder generation and used to learn so many things. So, there is a need of external intervention and hence the need for, you know, scaling. You know, our farmers are, in fact, they are partially skilled. They need upskilling and reskilling and coupled with the income enhancement. So, we have got a situation where on one side, you know, there is a decline in agriculture workforce and the average age of farmer is going up. But and retention of youth in agriculture is a particular challenge and that's a global phenomenon. So, how do you, you know, glamorize this particular field? Which can only happen if you introduce the technology element and make it, you know, something technology-oriented and perceived from entrepreneurship perspective to the youth. So, that's, you know, where our intervention comes and in the Skill India mission, of course, there are various sector skill councils along with NSDC, they work in this particular field. And we do work with Ministry of Skill Development and Entrepreneurship as the Central Ministry and both the Ministry of Agriculture, Ministry of Farmers, Dairy and Animal Management, line ministries with whom we work, but in a, you know, we bring the industry perspective. So, we are a industry-driven initiative and this is a standard-setting body which is advisory in nature. So, what we are right now doing is, and you know, facilitating the scaling program in agriculture, be it horticulture, farm, ag addition, dairy poultry and fishery. And our focus is much more on the creation of para-professionals. In India, we have got almost seventy-eight agriculture and veterinary studios and, but you know, we produce graduate, post-graduates and I'm not discounting any of the good work being done by them. But where are the people who actually we are the boot and the aprons and do this particular activity at the ground level? So, we in the last, you know, almost six years, we have done about three and a half lakh short-term trainings and these short-term trainings are generally a month and longer and almost six lakhs recognition of prior learning. And what is this recognition of prior learning is very, very important for agriculture sector because we need to give some kind of identity, you know. Agriculture is a vast field. I mean, there are almost two hundred plus different job roles within agriculture sector. So, why not give a vocation identity if somebody is an aquaculture farmer? So, he should be given a kind of certification, identity. So, we do, you know, assessments, certifications, training of trainer, content development and a host, you know, a whole lot of other activities. And talking about Atmanirbhara Bharat also, you know, while there are a host of measures which have been announced in terms of funding which is available in terms of agriculture infrastructure fund or the animal husband infrastructure fund or, you know, for the beekeeping or the herbal production. And also there are reforms which have been announced in terms of, you know, the APMC Act changes and removal of the stock limits. So, but there is an element, you know, scaling is going to be playing a very, very crucial role, you know, because on one side, there is a very low skill base amongst the farmers. And also when you're talking about, you know, vocal for local with global outreach, there are a whole lot of elements involved around traceability and how the things are, you know, packaged or, you know, the kind of agriculture residue or pesticide residue, things that you take care of. You also are, you know, talking about in Atmanirbhara Bharat, you know, thinking or when you talk about sector-specific, if it is a fishery sector, there is a lot of focus on the... you also are you know talking about in Atamdevar Bharat you know thinking or when you talk about sector specific if it is a fishery sector there is a lot of focus on the cage culture or the seaweed cultivation or the ornamental fisheries so every these are new components where you need scaling in intervention and similarly is the case of animal husbandry which is like you know the honorable Prime Minister talks and a lot of focus on AI facilities and vaccination disease control all these elements we can you know totally facilitate with this kind of external intervention because of course KVKs are doing a very great work and also the relevant organization but that needs to be coupled with some outcome in terms of assessment and certification and what when we are talking about the needs you know the needs have to be you know there are different kind of skill set which are going to be required you know you need to focus on the innovation you know scaling the entrepreneurship development the digital scaling the employability scaling the foundation scaling a person has to be multi skilled one he cannot be you know looking at something you know being a solo skill character and this is this is going to be a lifelong learning talking about what the industry and CSR can play a very very important role because if there are certain ideal works workplace you know workplaces which are available that can be used for training because in India we have got a challenge we have got multiplicity of infrastructure but the optimal utilization of infrastructure is not there and as Puri mentioned you know the post harvest you know is the losses we talk quite a lot but you know if you don't you know skill of a farmer's enough you know what is to be done as a post harvest practice to reduce that particular loss or to you know package it properly so that he can compete in this particular you know scenario and when you're talking about you know all kind of big basket and Amazon coming in directly sourcing of farmers but it needs to be packaged in some shape and size which you know provide proper grading so that the end consumer when you're removing certain channels he is able to directly prefer that you know source so I will leave it at that and we look forward that there are a whole lost of a whole lot of CSR and big foundations which attend this particular CSR summit they had their focus has been for long period of time on multiple things I think a small bit of focus is also required on scaling front and that is allowed by the CSR mandate as well and within scaling field I would always you know request for agriculture because anyway agriculture always gets a short shift and it's not a crybaby case of mine because it's a it's a hard fact that you know whenever you talk about scaling in front of anyone you would say you know okay Bharat was killing on a cheyote as a karte hain vo ek retail associate kauna cheyote with the offense man to my colleagues in retail you know our retail associate on a cheyote meri colony ke gate pe jo you know security guard hai vo skilled on a cheyote cashier skilled on a cheyote IT ka BPU data entry operators ke on a cheyote kabhi humne socha hai ki dairy farmer ka ek scaling on a cheyote taaki covid situation maine vo aapko safe dude pahuncha sakayi a milk delivery man jo aap ek ghar pe kar raha hai hygienic practices where are we thinking of scaling those everything in fact it doesn't occur to us whether this you know various you know segments of agriculture needs I will rest thank you
Hey thanks a lot Satinder that was a very you know very good intervention I think it's you know one of the things that a couple of things struck me when you were speaking one is that you know I think hearing you talk about the work that your organization is doing and the fact that you get you throw out the statistic three and a half lakh short duration programs in the last I think three or four years which is incredible you know clearly the government is thinking in a very systematic way about scaling individual people to bring them up to a level where they can take advantage of the opportunities being opened up for them in the agriculture sector and that's that's a phenomenal realization I think you're absolutely right farmers have no formal technical education they need to be re-skilled and it's not a question of you know making them graduates and you know turning out another million graduates who then come out and probably can't find what to do para scaling is the way to go vocational training which is the near the yard is the way to go I you know a very interesting thing that struck in my mind is that your organization is working on innovations killing so much the need of the hour innovation didn't be a big aha invention that gets an Nobel Prize innovations is how do you do small things differently to make to create an impact employability scaling a lot of the people even graduates that even I have encountered in my corporate career clearly unemployable you can't even offer them jobs what is an employability scaling wonderful stuff that you're doing and I think if I if I if the numbers that you indicate are anything to go by then clearly the scaling at an individual level and you replicate this individual scaling or ten fifteen twenty million cohort I think it's a huge base of people who can then take advantage of the opportunities being opened up by Atamdevar Bharat so thanks a lot for your intervention uh moving on from Doctor Arya I will now move to to Tanaja and Mr. Mr. Singh Savit Kumar Singh Tanaja is an NGO that works with FPOs and marginal farmers and the reason I am moving to you Amit is that primarily because you know Satinder talked about scaling at an individual level scaling at an individual level being driven programmatically by the Indian government now I want you know you to talk about the capability building that Tanaja as an NGO is doing with groups of people groups of farmers marginal farmers NGOs so I'm moving the lens a bit from the individual farmer to capable in the scaling of individuals to capability building of groups of farmers and FPOs so that they can then get the requisite commercial confidence the capabilities the organizational structures how do you do business how do you organize your value chains in a more impactful way how do you create a bargaining position I would imagine I don't know I'm just thinking out loud from what I know about FPOs so far and I've dealt with FPOs and a lot of them have areas developed in this this field and interesting that you know you you guys work in Gujarat UP Orissa AP you're based in Washington DC you work in Africa you've got a lot of international experience so I was just curious to see and you're saying you take a whole farm approach to drive profitability of smallholder farmers through FPOs and organized movements so what is you know the brief outline of the work that you do and how do you think this is going to impact the capability of lots of individually skilled farmers to come together and then go forward to become self rely
Thank you Sean it's a privilege to be a member of this August panel that would discuss agriculture food and nutrition to start with since you know CSR box has organized this webinar so on all the forums I speak I you know I always you know you know beside being vocal for local we should be vocal for one thing that is still agriculture is has not been mentioned in the schedule seven of the CSR CSR Act so we need to be vocal for that also so that you know increased amount of resources would come to the sector so that is one I'll give you a brief you know and then I'll come to your question so brief about the Tanaja Tanaja who creates economic and social opportunities in Africa Asia Latin America with partners like Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation Walmart Foundation and leading companies like Mars and Nigli Confectionery Kalis and many others our work focuses on increasing productivity probability of smallholder farming communities with women's empowerment and improved nutrition as a key outcome so if you look at you know the data of farmers so more than eighty nine percent of farmers they are small and maternal and we know that they grow a variety of subsistence and cash crops to meet their dietary and income needs yet supply chain investment often focus on just one to build a resilient food system in farming communities we should consider a whole farm approach that diversifies income smoothenes the opportunities and you know increases access to nutritious food now about you know as Doctor Purvi Maita said that except ten to twelve value chains nothing is working so one of the major reason is you know beside you aggregate the farmers you make them you know into a farmer producer organization and farm producing companies but you know one thing is missing the 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 focus very little on you know creating that conducive ecosystem that can you know help the FPOs to grow and as Doctor Satinder was speaking about the scaling so scaling you know farmers yes that is very important but but one thing is I think he should include in his curriculum that you know we are lacking the so you know human resource or you know as a CEOs of these FPOs who will run this FPO they are already a startups so if you want to you know commercialize them if you want to run like a company so you'll have to behave like a company and you see you know how our resources are being given by different organizations for developing FPOs we pay to ten thousand maximum twenty to forty thousand rupees for a CEO another staff so that is not sufficient amount if you want really to work you know make this FPOs a commercial entity you need to bring you know good CEOs and or having you know and and I know that if you look at you know this in a vast of FPOs we don't find you know the right people to work as CEOs so that is one of the challenges that we faced and we had to train them we hired you know the MBAs students and we we trained them to become CEOs that's why you know many many of our FPOs that we formed is running successfully and you know the second part second thing is what is the demand in the market so there is a mismatch between demand and supply so if you know market demands elongated tomatoes or desi tomatoes let farmers you know grow desi tomatoes and that can happen only when there is a connect and again I'll say the same thing that we need to develop that ecosystem where you know banking you know they get a good finance they get you know good business development organizations they get you know good charter accountants you know I was recently doing a survey in two of the states on FPOs and when I talk to the promoting organizations and the farmers so many of them are not you know they have not filed the returns and they get notices from the different departments so that is also one of the problem that we get a project we form FPOs and then we leave that space and then that becomes a liability for the farmers as you know Doctor Purvi Maita said we'll have to consider farmers as a partner so if we consider them as a partners we'll have to take them along we'll have to handhold them till you know they become self sufficient self sufficient and then that can be a key to Atminder Bharat and recently you know now I'll come to the food and nutrition recently in one of our projects in Andhra Pradesh we did food and environment study to integrate nutrition in our agriculture project so that is basically you know farmer market business project so we make FPOs market ready and the model is we first make farmers FPO ready and then FPO market ready and also we sensitize you know the buyers the off takers how to deal with these FPOs because many of them they don't know I if you look at the recent farm laws that has been passed by the government so that can become successful only when this you know both the parties the off takers as well as the FPOs are trained to deal with each other so we 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 paint them we build their capacity to negotiate on the rates cause they negotiate with the FPOs and FPOs they negotiate with the buyers but that can happen only when you have a good CEO and good professional on board so that is one thing so I'll I'll talk about the food and environment study so through that the study now we are we are you know making a strategy how the nutritious food can be you know available locally can be accessible and can be affordable so that you know farmers who are you know feeding the entire country but their families are not getting nutritious food so that is the first step we have taken in India although we are in in other countries we are working with the partners like Bill and Melinda Gates on agriculture and nutrition projects but this is first time we are doing in India the most important thing which I think
Doctor Amit I think if you could just quickly conclude so that we could move on because I think we're otherwise running overtime
So I'll conclude here only so one of the tasks that CSR box can do because they have a good network of the corporates to sensitize government as well as other other important stakeholders to mention agriculture and nutrition as a separate subject in schedule seven so that you know more and more resources can be dedicated for this purpose thank you
Thank you thank you Amit that was a very you know useful intervention very learned I think agriculture sector is not mentioned in schedule seven certainly is something that needs to be taken up it comes to a considerable surprise needs to be there you know and I think I I like the philosophy of the approach that you outlined which is I think it sums up very well what really needs to be done and what you guys are doing you make the farmers FPO ready and make the FPO market ready I think that's a very very good summary in a nutshell of what needs to be done build their capacity to negotiate into integrate talent into the organizations really I think scaling of individuals scaling of farmers to become parts of FPOs who can then take advantage of the opportunities being opened up for them is I think the way to go so thanks very much indeed I'll now move on to a different you know participant who'll talk about it through a different lens and that's Pabna Sharma from ITC you know she has already been introduced she heads the food and nutrition vertical as well so she is in business in a shit to being a scientist and researcher so she wears many hats as she told me and she works in sustainability as well so and and you know ITC is a huge conglomerate you know among all the panelists here you're very different you come from a different organization so and you know you work on you know you talked about on 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 form sustainability management of on term sustainability you have a program called Sunnaharakal that ITC runs but more importantly I think ITC is one of the few organizations where actually the rubber meets the road in terms of what Purvi effort to as the output side of the market in terms of working with farmers to evacuate their produce you do a whole lot of it in wheat other commodities as well so one of the things that really helps farmers become self sufficient is that there is somebody who helps them to navigate the entire put together the entire end to end value chain right input side which is reasonably strong as Puri said but more of the output side and I believe for instance juices is an example where you've done that very successfully the whole world knows about what you do in wheat right in terms of you know procurement so can you talk a little bit about what in your view this aspect of weaving together the post harvest value chain can do to build a block as one of the building blocks of Atminder Bharat in this agriculture food nutrition complex using ITC's interventions and your own experiences as an example
Yeah thanks thanks a lot Sean I think I'll be extremely honest before I start saying anything and before I start dropping some of the you know well established facts from ITC I think I never before I thought that I would be able to use these five words in one forum and I'll try to do my best in the next five minutes which is nutrition consumers innovation agriculture sustainability I think most of the time you know I think in the last decade of the work that I think at least I've been part of I've been part of many forums which we are talking about you know like I will be talking about nutrition and the malnutrition and you know the entire impact of you know what's happening on the health of individuals and the community at large what are the things we are doing as regulators as food manufacturers the things that they're going to do whether it's going to be through bio fortification whether it's going to be to fortification and what is is going to be required to back end to do that which is also going ahead to the discussions that I think which Puri kinda just touched upon on the side to say you know impact on the health from both the positive and the negative direction we've always talked about the consumers for them to even understand what's happening at the back end and you know what is the most important role which is being played by the farmers and you know what they're doing and I think for the discussion which are happening in the country today I think we are all aware of those things there is a whole discussion which happens on the sustainability part in the agriculture I think no business today is going to survive without a purpose and the purpose of that eventually goes down to the whole sustainability practices and all those things I think you know at ITC when we talk about this the spirit which has always always guided us is about the fiscal philosophy of responsibility towards supporting the nation and that's why I have the credo that we use as nation first Subsak Badi you know because I can genuinely at the core of everything that we do we believe that any sustainable solution to address any given challenges that we're facing today as a country and even as a world requires the efforts of everybody to get together the civil society policymakers the regulators the businesses the NGOs we have to do this together we have to do the work that we have to do and and lucky like you what you're just mentioning we do have the scale and the reach in order to impact the lives so I think it is very simple for us we have articulated something which is very simple for us putting India first keeping the country before a corporation and the institution before individual this is how it works for us we work at two horizon levels For us, we work at two horizon levels. It cannot work without it because for us, we believe that you have to strengthen what is happening today. You know, we have to continue to strengthen today's dominant sources of livelihood, no matter what it is. And we do it by also looking at both on-farm and off-farm as a practice. And I think when I say off-farm, I think that's where the women empowerment, vocational skill training comes into the picture at, and you know, and completely drives it. The second is to also create opportunities and capabilities for tomorrow by improving the habitats. You know, everybody is talking about climate change, we have to talk about the responsibilities and the footprints that we're carrying it around. We have to create a generation of people tomorrow which are going to be better than us, who can stand on our shoulders to say that we've been able to deliver the things in a more transparent way. By having a social infrastructure in place and, you know, for that, I think the most logical to do it is two things. Providing the visibility into the entire chain, the traceability and I think Dr. Satinder also mentioned this word traceability when I was listening to him about, you know, how we actually take it back. And how you put that farmer right up in the front for people to believe that yes, there is a way why you can actually link all of them without compromising on individual aspects of it. So like today, when I talk about it and I think what you just attacked, I don't want to get into the details of the entire ITC's a, a social investment plan where we talk about, you know, creating or touching likes of millions of farmers through the E Chapa. There is a concentrated effort of this through the Sastu Chapa that we run for the health. There is a concentrated effort on, you know, developing gainful, uh, uh, skill employment, especially for women. And I think there's huge amount of data, I think, that are also available on the reports that you see, where you can actually touch the lives of people. You can actually even target to know that, you know, their incomes have gone up, how the generation to generation is getting better in getting those things. But I think one thing which actually makes a lot of difference and I think I'll be very honest again to share this is that having worked into this domain of product development to, you know, making clean impacts and, you know, doing researches with multiple partners and NGOs and all those things. It is very easy to still develop a product and call out the benefits of it. It is very difficult to sometimes get that little space on the pack of your product or put that whole sustainability initiative on your pack so that you can actually make a difference. And I think what you were just touching upon is I, I, I'm sorry, it's, I'm not very much visible that we do have a brand called Be Natural. And if you actually look at the back of pack of it, we've actually gone out to the traceability of putting the pictures of individual farmers there. And if there is a, there is a barcode, if you scan it, you'll actually run through the whole story of it. So the idea of Atmanir Bharat, for me, somebody like me, you know, at the core of it starts from here as well. We not only will have to develop an infrastructure for that one farmer to be able to grow. For the farmer to be able to grow, you need a E Chapa platform for them to have all the information that they need to make the most right decisions at the right time. It has to be then given that support that farmer and the entire community when I talk about that, for them to be not only able, like I said, harvest. Pre-harvest solutions, post-harvest solutions. For it to reach out that it actually reaches a buyer in the end and it doesn't go down the drain in the part of the value chain because otherwise you actually lose that whole meaning. And after that, I think to be able to also just close the loop by, you know, putting those pictures or, you know, you have the you actually put out that our oranges are coming from this part of Maharashtra or the guavas are coming from here or the apples are coming from there, which is all in India and you have the stories coming by them. And then you eventually close the final loop by also being able to do a longitudinal study to say the impacts that it has had on the overall community or the life of that one farmer which has a ripple on it and it can go in any direction. It could talk about the increase in their area in which they are doing in terms of acres. It can go into the, the fact that I am a farmer, but my son has gotten two more tractors and got the knowledge for my, you know, production going much higher up. And you guys not leaving me in the middle to say, now we've given the knowledge, please go somewhere else. You actually come back to give them the assurance that, you know, we are going to be part with you at every step of that chain. And I think, like, I also wear the hat of a nutritionist to be, you know, to be honest, it also gives me a lot of peace and pride at the same time to know the product that I'm getting has a traceability, has that whole line, carries that, you know, the pride of a farmer that we're unable to do. And in the end, I'm also able to close it with my consumer to say that, you know what, what you are getting is also full of nutrition. This is the way you can do it. And, you know, I, I think there are hundred more ways to make it better. This is just one of the examples. There's another range of organic, which is, you know, within our portfolio, which we are using the same traceability and all those things about that. So I think in the end, I think just two points for me, which comes across very clearly is that we have to do this together. And I think more and more that I'm being part of these discussions, I'm realizing that nutrition, agriculture, sustainability and farmer, you know, being at the core of it, they're not separate. Actually, they're one, one discussion. And I think I'll probably just sign it off by saying that, you know, I think we were discussing like what could we also mention about the wheat and rice being the staple of it. Today, we have minutes in this discussion. There are multiple reasons why minutes are coming up, not only because of nutrition, they're also coming because rice is becoming very water-intensive, which has a direct impact that, you know, why farmers should grow rice or why it should actually grow millets. It is also talking about, you know, being vocal for local and local for global, those kind of discussions that are happening. And this is something which at ITC we take great pride and a great effort for us to do that. And I think we just lately, we have just started that whole Atmanir Bharat Swamiman Bharti series as well. And I think, you know, we are going to continue to work in this direction. So that's all from my side on this, Sharm.
Hey, thanks a lot, Bhavna. That was really nice. If I just quickly sum up in maybe thirty seconds, I think what you, what you said was interesting that, you know, you need, you look at nutrition, agriculture, sustainability and farmer sustainable, farmer profitability and farmer capability as one whole. And it's very important to do that and ITC as a corporate has got the scale to be able to not only individually impact nutrition, agriculture, sustainability and farm profitability but actually to do so in a holistic way that pulls together all of these aspects to create an impact. And the other interesting thought that you had was, this, this sort of stuck in my mind. I think what you said was give the farmer a stake in the value chain, right? Give the farmer a stake in the output value chain and putting the farmer's picture on the pack was a very powerful example of that. If the farmer is given a stake in the value chain, not just in monetary terms, but in emotional terms as well, in terms of saying, closing the loop is an important concept, right? And it's not a concept that's heard very often. I'm hearing the concept after a very long time in this specific context. So closing the loop and giving the farmer a stake in the value chain, I think is surefire long-term way of making him stay invested in this effort. So thanks very much indeed, Bhavna, for that. So now there are two more panelists, one of them is me, I'll go next. And, and there's a specific reason why I'm asking, requesting the last panelist to come in last, I'll come to that. So I, I'm representing an organization called Vilgro. We are, you know, we are an incubator, a startup incubator, which means that we, we provide seed funding and mentorship and advisory and incubation support. So once we decide to take a company into our portfolio with funding, we stick with them for a year, year and a half, two years, three years and help them on their way to success. And one of the measures of our success is to make them successful to get to the next round of funding, which should be series A, which can be C round funding and so on and so forth. So combination of funding and enveloping them with what we have is a high-tech incubation model. We work with startups. Now, the philosophy of Vilgro, and that's why it's directly linked with Atmanir Bharat, is that we work at the tri-junction of three things. One, we prefer to work with invention-based startups, right? Startups which are actually inventing something, it could be an invention of a product, it could be the invention of a particular algorithm or software. It could be an innovation around, we are going to market, but a preference is something that has got an IP ring fence around it, right? Because we believe that technology is extremely important for various sectors in India to grow, not least in agriculture. So one is it has to be invention-stroke-innovation-based startup. Second is it has to impact, have an impact at the bottom of the pyramid. So in the specific case of agriculture, it means it needs to impact the lives of all world of farmers, number two. Number three, the startup has to be for profit. We don't fund engines, we want, because we believe that if a great idea is put out in the marketplace by a bunch of bright young entrepreneurs unless it is profitable and can grow sustainably into a large business, we're not going to be able to, it won't have an impact. So what's the point? So at the try, it's the ikigai, so to speak, of these three areas is where we focus on finding startups. We currently are incubating approximately thirty companies across agriculture sector, health sector, clean energy, livelihoods and education. There are four sectors broadly, we've got about thirty companies that are being incubated through our incubation mission model and, you know, so, so on and so forth. So, so what we specifically coming, so as you can see, the entire objective of Vilgro is that, you know, we think that the problems of the country can be solved by helping these startups to stand their own feet. These are technologies developed in India for India. And we help them became, go on their journey to becoming large and sustainable, so they can contribute to Atmanir Bharat. So it is killing of a different kind, but operates in a completely different pace. So you have cooperates like ITC and Bhavna has spoken, you've got Purvi from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, you've got Tanaja which is an NGO, you've got the Agricultural Skills Association. So, you know, various parties have spoken and JSW, you know, will come in, you know, so. But Vilgro is in a different space in terms of saying, okay, we build the startups who can then grow up and, and create an impact in the agricultural ecosystem. The way I look at it, and many of you would probably agree with me, is that Indian agriculture, when compared to agriculture in most countries, especially the adult world is disaggregated in every sense of the world, extremely small land holdings, you know, less than, you know, less than a couple of hectares. Millions of farmers poorly skilled, poorly educated. The supply chains and the value chains are so fragmented, you know, between the farm, you know, to the to the Monday, maybe a couple of people, Monday to the, you know, vegetable handcart puller in Bombay or Delhi, six or seven different people. Each person takes, you know, there is each level of this value chain introduces inefficiencies, price distortions, leakages. You know, spoilage and so on, there's so many problems. Right from the landholding to the entire value chain up onto the consumer, too many segments, too many linkages. So the problem in India, I've, I've discovered is that typically when a new technology is introduced in the West, they say we've got to scale up the technology because, you know, in the US, the average corn farmers field size is three hundred acres. In Brazil, it's average soybean farmer is five hundred acres. I've been on farms in Brazil which are like thirty thousand hectares, you know, it's like almost like a forest. In India, you got, you know, one acre, two acres, three acres. I remember one of the professors in Yale whom I studied with, he, he said the problem in India with technology is that you have to scale it down. What does it mean by that? You've got to take a technology and scale it down such that, take an example of a tractor. Tractors in the USA don't need to have very small turning radius because the farms are from three hundred acres in size on average. In India, the tractor needs to have a very small turning radius because a farm is two acres in size. Unless four or five farmers come together and aggregate the land, how can the tractor work? Things like that, how do you scale down? So in the agriculture ecosystem in India, one of the challenges that we face as an incubator is, how do you make startups grow to scale? A startup typically works in small geography, startup based in Mysore, will work in Karnataka and how does the same startup's technology go across to West Bengal in three to four years' time? And in order to make these startups successful and create scale across the country, partnerships and network effects are very important. So a startup incubator like Vilgro needs to be able to create networks with foundations, with NGOs, with other startups, with cooperates like ITC. One of, one of, one of the startup companies that I'm incubating is actually working with ITC in an area and it's been a very fruitful relationship so far. But incubators like Vilgro have a role to play in ensuring that startups can scale down and scale across. When I say, when I say scale down, startups are obviously small scale, but they are able to scale down the technology in an intelligent manner such that the small world of farmer can get hold of it. And once you get traction in a particular geography, how do you rapidly scale across various geographies in India? So that startups can then start to impact India on scale. Today, even a startup in agriculture which has been working for the last ten years, typically have fifteen in a state, maybe two states. That's a very long time to scale, right? So the role of incubators in India and what Vilgro is trying to do is to create a network effect such that startups can scale down and scale across to create impact rapidly on a disaggregated farm-to-folk value chain in India. That's the best way I can sum it up. So, you know, that's basically what we do in Vilgro and that's, and I think that incubators need to work very closely in partnerships with, with, let's say, NGO like Tanaja or with Dr. Arya in the Agricultural Skill Council of India, you know, with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. That's a role, that's a job, that's the way they can get together and create a mass momentum and a critical mass for startups in the startups ecosystem to start impacting agriculture on a small, large scale. Otherwise, you'll have, you know, seven hundred startups in the agricultural sector in India, each doing its own thing, you know, in a little space. Collectively, they won't really have much of an impact, as opposed to an ITC which has been able to impact millions of acres over the last twenty years with E Chapa. Startups are nimble.
I'm sorry to interject, but
Okay, I'm running out of time, okay. I know, we are out of time, so I'll stop my spiel there. And I'll, I'll, I'll invite the, the last panelist and he is last for a specific reason. So that's Ashwini from the JSW Foundation, Cement and Steel and so on. And how do, and, and, you know, he has said me something very interesting, livelihoods and nutrition, how do they work together? Farmers at subsistence level, how do they increase their income? Nutrition cannot be the only driver driven by a public health program and how to tweak crops grown by to nutritionally increase in livelihoods. So this entire thing, you know, as, 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 as an organization outside the agriculture, food and nutrition complex, how do you look at this complex? Why didn't you decide to get into it and how do you see the work that you do linking up to create an Atmanir Bharat is what I want to expand on?
Uh, thank you, Sharm. Good afternoon to all my co-panelists and it's a lovely opportunity, you know, to listen to Dr. Satinder and Dr. Purvi and all these experts. I will, I will, you know, and I was listening to what Bhavna also, I think, touched upon in the beginning, you know, that forty-seven percent people are still eating what they grow. And so I would like to, you know, take, take one detour, you know, to first capture what Sharm mentioned that why are we into this? So as a CSR organization, when you're working in very remote areas, especially working with tribal and rural populations to have your social license to operate for a perpetuity, obviously you have to engage with communities around them. Obviously, the marginal and the small-scale farmers are the ones, you know, whom you have to reach out to make sure how you can help them. But even primary to that is the challenge that as a, as a company which is into steel manufacturing and energy and whatnot. Water becomes a very important issue, you know, because drinking water and water per se becomes an important issue for them. And so we, as a foundation, you know, did a lot of work in the water space, creating watershed opportunities, you know, looking at desilting of dams and so on and so forth. And that, I think, created the opportunity for us to realize that, okay, now since we've created additional water potential in the regions where we are working, can we address the issue of, you know, livelihoods? And in rural areas, obviously, you cannot be touching upon livelihoods in a holistic manner if you don't touch upon agriculture. So I think that's all, you know, we, we realize that, you know, this is how we're going to work towards the livelihoods augmentation of the farmers in the region. More so because typical farming household has got very little substance, you know, to survive upon. At the same time, we also found that in these number of regions where we were working, malnutrition always continues to exist in, in various facets. And I, I would like to, you know, just, so at this moment, what we realize is that this whole concept of livelihoods and nutrition, they kind of mutually reinforce each other. Or perhaps if we do not, you know, work on what, either of them alone, it is not going to solve the problem. Perhaps it's important for us to lay a focus on both of them. And therefore, you know, at this juncture, I would like to bring in some, you know, interesting facts that I, some data that I was reading somewhere. So this eighteen-country data, you know, which was analyzed by Rajiv Banerji and Two Flow. It says that food is, food consumption in the extremely poor rural households, it's between thirty-six to seventy-nine percent. And on the other hand, in the urban areas, it is from fifty-three to seventy-four percent. And in one particular Indian specific example, I came across that the poor can actually spend thirty percent more on their food if they could have cut down on tobacco, alcohol, festivities, et cetera. You know, very interesting data that I came across. But then why are they not doing it? And our whole approach in the nutrition space and I know, I have experts like Bhavna and Purvi sitting here. So please pardon me for my limited knowledge because I don't come from that background. But what interesting thing that I observed was that, you know, why is it not working? That people are capable of spending on their nutrition, but they're not spending it. Or the worst case is that if they're spending, they're spending it on something which is more tasty, more well-packaged but perhaps not as nutritious. So this was one, you know, puzzle that, that we realized and I think we realized that, you know, this is something, this is a, this is a struggle that we'll have to, you know, look at. So this was one aspect. The second aspect that we looked at was that the farmer household, typical farmer household at least the ones that we are working with are so marginal that the kind of big commercial kind of work that Amit has been able to do, you know, through Tanaja. You know, where he's connecting farmers to, you know, the value chain of mint and what, you know, mint farmers to the value chain of Ridley and all that. I mean, that's perhaps something which is not, we should be focusing upon, even if we want to improve livelihoods. So, so where should we be focusing on the agri livelihoods development? We should be focusing on agri livelihoods development to the extent that it is able to, you know, sustain the nutrition levels of the people. And can we work in that same space where back, backyard farming or as they call them as kitchen garden or nutrition gardens? Can we start working on that? And what is it that we can actually, you know, And, uh, what is it that we can actually, you know, do which is going to solve two problems at the same time that the farmer is able to produce more? And at the same time also able to consume, uh, you know, more nutritious meals. And that's where we started working with AgriSat. And we introduced a whole range of varieties where, you know, there are iron fortified millets and iron fortified cereals, pulses especially. And, uh, we, we picked up this data and we realized that, you know, uh, the farmer which with whom we are working since he is not doing any commercial farming. You know, it's a marginal farmer. So whatever else is produced and left behind is going to be consumed by the family. And if the family can start consuming it, the nutrition basket is going to improve. And we all know that, you know, uh, nutrition has a very significant and a very long-term role to play. Uh, in the educational attainment of a child, in the, you know, manner in which the child is going to, you know, all in his life, in coming times, et cetera. And so therefore, uh, we realize that, you know, this is, this is the catch, this is where the two ends meet. That nutrition and livelihood have to go hand in hand. I'll not go into the details of where, uh, you know, what other livelihood options we started working upon. I will remain focused only around agri livelihoods. So this was one part where we started working that, okay, let's, let's look at how nutrition can be addressed, uh, uh. Through backyard farming and also see if there is a surplus that is getting generated. How to connect it to the market so that, you know, that they can, uh, certainly make, uh, economic benefit out of, also out of it. The second aspect that we started working on was that the meals that they receive.
Sorry, sir. Uh, sorry. Sorry for interjecting. Uh, our next panel is also waiting right now. Can you please wrap this up quickly?
So I would like, like to wrap it up at this point itself that, uh. You know, it's important for us to look at the nutrition and agriculture in a, in a more holistic and mutually reinforcing manner. Uh, where I think we are trying to work something like what, uh, I think already of us are aware, smart food thing that we're doing with AgriSat. Millets have suddenly started, you know, making, uh, space in the, uh, uh, shops where. Purvi and Bhavana and me and Amit are going and shopping. Suddenly millet-based, you know, products have become fancy food. And I think that's one of the right approaches, you know, to address, uh, you know, uh, the opportunity of addressing nutrition. And agricultural livelihood promotion at the same time. I'll stop you. Thank you so much.
Hey, thanks a lot, Ashwini. And, uh, you know, uh, uh, I think we have, uh, no time to do a Q and A. Maybe what CSR boss could do, uh, maybe collect the questions from this session and then send it on to participants individually. So that we could answer it leisure. But I'd be rapid up right now by thanking all the panelists for their, uh, for their presence, for their patience. And staying in this process across the last couple of weeks. It's been an absolute pressure to, uh, to interact with you guys. I personally have learned so much. I'm sure the audience has too. And my compliments to CSR box for having put together such a diverse and wonderful panel which brought together, uh, on one table so many different lenses. And prisons through which to view this rather large topic. Uh, so my compliments to you as well. And finally, thanks to, thank you very much indeed. It's been a great one hour.